We have provided several ways to participate in or view tonight's town council meeting, including you may email staff and council with comments viewing the meeting through Zoom video conference, which can be accessed on the town's website via computer or other smart device, or call in tonight through Zoom conferencing by phone. Press star nine during the public comment portion to speak on an item. When you do that, we'll know that you want to be heard and we will see that. Please be aware that it may not appear to you that your attendance and interest in speaking are visible, but staff can view that and can view the participants that have joined the meeting and when they have raised their virtual hand. We ask that you refrain from doing this until public comment portion of the item on which you wish to comment. I will provide a longer than usual period of time for virtual attendees to raise their hands so as to ensure time to be recognized. When recognized, if you would, please state your name for the record. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to comment, which staff will monitor. I want everyone to remind everyone that they should speak loudly and clearly. As we begin our meeting, I would ask everyone to mute their microphones and allow staff to give a full presentation. For the sake of order, I will ask each of my colleagues if they have a question after the presentation is over. Now for open time for public expression, the public is welcome to address the council at this time on matters that are not on the agenda that are within the jurisdiction of the council. Please be advised that council is not permitted to discuss or take any action on any matter that is not on the agenda. Comments may be no longer than three minutes and should be respectful to the community. And I will ask if there is public that would like to speak tonight and then staff will let us know how many members of the public have raised their hand. So moving on to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is the call to order and roll Linda, am I doing the roll call or are you?
Yes, I thought you were going to do that.
I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember Cool.
Present.
Councilmember Robbins.
Present.
Councilmember Kircher.
Present.
I'll unmute you and see if that works for you, Julie.
Okay, participating by phone.
Thank you. The next item is the posting of the agenda. Has the agenda been posted, Linda?
Yes.
And the next item is the swearing in of new Ross Town Council members Elizabeth Breckus, Beech Cool, and C. William Kircher Jr. Linda?
Okay, I'm going to do the oath of allegiance. And I'd like all three councilmembers, Breckus, Cool, and Kircher, to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. And when I say I, and you're going to add your name in there. So I.
I, Beech Cool.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will give true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So this is subscribed and sworn on the 16th day of April in the year 2020. And congratulations, all of you. Welcome, Bill Kircher.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, Bill.
Thanks, Beech.
Item is the minutes and we have two different minutes to leave a requested or did any did Linda, did you receive a requested correction to the minute?
Yes.
Of, I believe it was the March 12th?
Yes, we have two edits, one that Councilmember Robbins sent in, which I think you all got a copy of. So it is on page five. Towards the end of the page, there was just some minor edits made to the paragraph relating to hydrologic capacity.
It basically just says that rather than that I confirmed this information, that I asked for confirmation of the information. That's the edit.
And the second edit was from Councilmember McMillan, which was just a minor. The on page 11, we refer to an address as 33, I'm sorry, as 20 windship and it should have said 33 windship. So that was the only change.
Can you tell me, is that to the same minutes?
Yes, March 12.
And what paragraph is that?
It is the eighth paragraph on page 11.
So it's regarding 20 windship is what it says and the address isn't.
It should have been 33.
Okay.
I move approval of the minutes with the changes requested.
Second.
Okay, we're going to take the vote. How do you vote, Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
And Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
And so the minutes of March 12 are approved as amended. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kircher, you, you should have been abstained from that for the March minutes. So it's actually for council letter voting on that item.
Right. Then I abstain.
So it's, yeah.
And now we're going to consider the minutes of March 19th. I did not hear of any corrections. Did you receive any?
I did not.
Okay. Does anybody have any corrections to that set of minutes?
I move approval of the minutes of March 19th.
Second.
Okay, and how do you vote, Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
And Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
And Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
All right, that passes as is. Thank you.
The next item is the demands. Have the demands been met?
Yes, they have.
Okay. The next item is open time for public expression. And as indicated, this is limited for three minutes per item and staff's going to control that tonight. It might be a little more abrupt than it would be at a council meeting. I'm sorry for that. We ask that if you're participating by phone and you want to be heard, you press star nine and that gives us the signal that you want to be heard. But if you're participating via Zoom, there's a way that you can raise your hand and I'm hoping that people know that. We'll give you a little bit more time to, to see that. I'm.
So I do have, excuse me, Mayor, I did get a letter for public comment from Samantha Hobart that she wanted read into the record, which I can read.
Thank you, yes.
Dear Town Council, on March 12th, you approve the mitigated negative declaration, mitigation, monitoring and reporting program and 80% plans for the Windship Avenue Bridge replacement project. Prior to that meeting and prior to the close of the comment period for environmental review, I submitted my concerns about the project. I understand that my timely comments were inadvertently overlooked by staff but have now been made part of the administrative record. I trust you have each had a chance to review those comments. I reiterate them here. As you consider the final design of the Windship Bridge project, my concern remains for the safety of my house, I'm sorry, my home and the protection of my property. In particular, I ask that the town address the following concerns in the final project design. There are four large trees on my property between my home and the San Anselmo Creek. They are at risk of falling when the town modifies the flow of the creek. In addition to the potential damage to the trees themselves, the trees are supporting the stability of my property along the bank of the creek. If the trees fall, my property is more likely to be swept into the creek. Mitigation measure Bio 9 requires that the town implement tree protection measures, which will be overseen by licensed arborists. I encourage the town to engage neighbors to proactively develop an acceptable plan for tree protection, especially for those neighbors within the biological study area. In addition, I request that the town provide each of us whose properties are in the biological study area with a copy of the tree protection plan as soon as possible and before the town approves the final project. The bank of the San Anselmo Creek is sloped and susceptible to erosion, especially as the town modifies the flow of water. Mitigation measure Bio 10 requires that the town implement creek bed and bank protection measures. In particular, the creek banks must be restored to a stable condition following construction and revegetative. Mitigation measure Bio 11 requires that the town return the area to pre-project conditions. Importantly, Bio 11 states the measure is to be implemented during and after construction. This is the town's ongoing responsibility to the neighbors of the Windship Bridge. Disturbances may include disturbances from changes in water flow after the bridge is replaced. I encourage the town to be proactive in Bio 10 protection so as to reduce the need for repairs required by Bio 10 repair. Finally, I would like to point out that there is a very small margin of error in the town's project design. For the Windship Bridge project, excuse me, the town relies on the studies conducted by Stetson Engineers, Inc., for the San Anselmo Flood Risk Reduction Project. The site inspection of my property, 78 Sir Francis Drake, determined that the San Anselmo Flood Risk Reduction Project would cause the water elevation to rise only a couple inches in a 25-year or 100-year flood event and remain below the level of the first finished floor. However, the Stetson site analysis did not consider that. There is crawl space below my home and the first finished floor is approximately two feet off the ground. In other words, the increase in water level caused by the SAFRR project may be enough to flood my crawl space, particularly at the northeast corner, and cause unknown damage to my home. Mitigation measure 4.9-4 FEIR, Volume 2, Page 2-25 needs to remedy this risk. The town must consider the potential for increased water levels and that my home could flood as a result of the Windship Bridge project. In summary, I ask that the town provide appropriate protection along the bank of the creek to ensure that my home does not flood, the trees do not fall, and my bank does not slide. Thank you for protecting my property. I look forward to working with the council and staff in this final but important phase of project design. Sincerely, Samantha Hobart.
Thank you. I, do you see anybody else with a raised hand, Linda?
I do, I see several.
Okay, I'm not seeing.
You can't see them?
I'm not.
Did you see manage participants on your screen?
I see, I see, yes, I do.
That's how you see them?
Okay, and I will call first on Doug Ryan. And so I see your hand raised and I'm going to click that and unmute you. And then I believe staff will be monitoring the three-minute rule. I'm clicking to unmute, though. It doesn't seem to be doing that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you. Please speak.
Cool. Hi, I'm Doug Ryan. I live at 74 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard in Ross. Thank you for holding this meeting. Just a couple things I wanted to follow up on with the Windship Bridge replacement property. Mayor Breckus, I appreciate your interest in this project and I copied you on an email I sent to Katie Rice on April 3rd. I'm just letting you know, I'm sure you're aware, I have received no response and I'm afraid that's going to be indicative of the support the county shows for this project and for my property specifically. And I just want to make sure the town is aware that I have specifically been in contact with my appropriate supervisor who has shown no inclination to be responsive or supportive or responsive at all. I find that just unacceptable. Secondly, Samantha Hobart had sent in an email to Liz Lewis requesting some information and I sent a follow-up email to Liz Lewis asking her to specifically answer the question Samantha had asked about why the first finished floor was considered instead of the base elevation minus a foot. To date, I have received no response. And again, I find that just appalling from somebody whose salary we pay. Thirdly, I had asked the town to forward me a date and timestamp copy of the letter sent to the county that was part of the resolution from the last board meeting approving this project, where the condition was we would move forward with the project after the town had sent a request to the county for indemnification. I've asked for a copy of that indemnification request. I have not received it and I just want to make sure that we're aware that I had asked. And those are my comments. Thank you very much. Gosh, I can't believe I'm done in under three minutes, which is a miracle and a record for me. Thank you all. You can mute me again.
Thank you so much and I'm hopefully successful at doing it. Yep, I did. I see someone whose hands is raised. There is no name associated with it because it looks like they called in from a phone number. So I'm gonna.
Just read out the last four digits of the phone number.
Right, I'm sorry. 0497 is the last four digits and then I will unmute them. And so 0497, if you would please speak.
Thank you, Mayor Breckus. This is Samantha Hobart at 78 Sir Francis Drake. I also called in from my cell phone to spare the internet resources. So I have my hand raised as Samantha Hobart from Zoom, so you can ignore that one. Thank you, Linda, for reading my letter. I really appreciate it being considered tonight. I'll just kind of re-summarize that. I have concerns about some trees that are along the creek and the increased water flow from the Windship Bridge. I have concerns for the risk of them falling in addition to the increased water compromising the integrity of the root system. And with them falling, I have concerns of what I'm supposed to do in a flood if all of a sudden they fall without the town taking appropriate measures to have them reviewed. And in addition, those trees support the creek bed and the properties that are along the creek. So I just think that I'd like to request that there's a tree protection plan and that it's reviewed by an arborist. In addition to modifying the water flow, there's going to be increased erosion and there's mitigation measures that require the creek bank to be restored back to pre-construction of the Windship Bridge status. So I just would like to ensure that the town has a plan in place to make sure that we're following these mitigation measures. And the last part of my letter, just in summary, just mentions that there's a very small margin of error in the town's design and the way that things are written right now, our properties are either flooding or they're not and there's no margin of error. And even FEMA requires a one-foot margin of error and I just have concerns that the proper due diligence is not in place and with the increased water, it's like all of these homes along the creek are going to flood. The EIR does mention that if there is increased water and to our homes, that they will have mitigation measures. And the county has confirmed that they, due to their work and the Windship Bridge, that water levels are increasing underneath my home and yet no one from the county or the San Anselmo Flood Risk Reduction Project has developed a plan to mitigate that risk. So I'd just like to request that the town have a plan in place, not only for the trees, but also for the increased water that's going to be underneath my home and detrimental to the integrity of the structure. Thank you. I really appreciate everyone's time tonight.
Thank you. I am not seeing anybody else with a hand raised, but I want to make sure I'm correct. Linda, do you see anyone?
I do not.
Okay. And I hope you all know that if an item is raised at public time for open expression, it's not agendaized, we are not allowed to comment on it and engage in discussion about it. So please don't take that as disinterest or, you know, ignoring what's being said. It's just the rules of a meeting and an agenda under the Brown Act. The next item is the mayor's report. These are very trying times. I know everyone is doing the best to hang in there and support others and I really appreciate the sacrifice each of you is making to make a difference. The town of Ross has had to shift its focus from normal operational activity, including preparing to adopt a new budget, to focus on the emergency orders issued from the Marin County Health Officer in coordination with five other counties' health officer orders. The town council and staff are not getting much of an advanced look at these orders and the orders are not always clearly stated. The town has no role in issuing these orders, but it does have the obligation to enforce the orders. We are working hard to appropriately interpret the orders, communicate to residents about the orders, and then respond and enforce the new orders. The council has been hearing from a lot of residents on a host of issues, including concerns with the crowds at Phoenix Lake, parking restrictions, the influx of neighborhood parking, voluminous bikers on the weekend, post offices returning boxes that are not being picked up, or just actually returning boxes, the financial welfare of downtown merchants, gardeners working and construction activity. Mayor Pro Tem Julie McMillan and I have been holding regular meetings with the town manager regarding these concerns and the town's response to them. I know that other members of the council are also communicating with staff about problems and concerns they are hearing. Please don't hesitate to raise other concerns. And if I did not respond to your email to me, I apologize. Like many of you, I have three children doing distance learning and I am getting on average 15 emails a day related to their online schoolwork. This is tough, but we will get through this and this will not last forever. Together, we will overcome this and as frightening as the disease is, we are responding appropriately and will come out of this in a much better position for the collective after effort we all undertook. Thank you so much for the first responders and the essential workers who are caring for people in our community, keeping our community safe, making our government work, and keeping food on our tables. Thank you. Stay strong, Ross. Tonight is the first council meeting we are conducting online and we hope to improve the meeting process as we continue to use virtual meeting technology. On a positive final note, congratulations and welcome to Bill Kirchner, who joins the council. I look forward to working with you and I also look forward to passing the torch to Julie McMillan, the mayor pro tem, who by tradition will be elected mayor tonight. Thank you. Next item is the council committee and liaison reports. Does anybody have a liaison report or a council committee report? Hey, Elizabeth, I just want you all to know that I can see you now and you can see me. Great. Your net is back.
All right, thank you. Glad to hear you and see you. I guess I'll give a brief liaison report. As you know, I'm president of the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers and we debated whether we had the technology to loop in so many mayors and councilmembers throughout Marin and do it effectively. And we determined that maybe what we should do at this time for the April 22nd meeting is just convene the mayors of that committee and address not only a latko appointment that the city selection committee makes, but also COVID-19 responses. And part of that is, you know, the idea that maybe there should be an ad hoc committee created, not just made up the mayors, but really whoever wants to be a part of it. And talk about whether or not we should start focusing on not only what we're all doing and sharing experiences, but also stimulating the economy and preparing for opening up and what that's going to look like and what we're going to do. So that meeting is on April 22nd. At this time, it's only going to be the mayors, but we expect that the May meeting will be a full group of the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers and will be a shortened business meeting, but certainly a meeting that will continue to talk about COVID response, which is obviously the most pressing issue we're all facing right now. So that's my report for MCCMC. Why don't we move on to item nine, which is staff and community reports? And I asked the town manager, do you have a report to give?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. And I want to start by congratulating the elected from the March election, Mayor Breckus, Councilmember Cool, and new Councilmember Kircher. Congratulations on your election. And normally, we would be having kind of a celebration. I feel bad because normally we'd be at town hall, we'd be kind of celebrating, you could have family, we'd have photos. Instead, we have this video of each of you alone in some room. So I wish we could have a real celebration, but congratulations. The town is very pleased to welcome Patrick Streeter as our new planning and building director. Patrick comes to Ross from Santa Rosa as their senior planner. He's had a lot of experience in both current planning and advanced planning, including some of the being a leadership role in the downtown housing initiative, being the project manager update of the downtown station area specific plan, which has a lot of complexity in different interest groups. He's also been a key member of Santa Rosa's Emergency Operations Center team, being there during the Tubbs Fire of 2017 and the Kinkade Fire of 2019 in the position of Deputy Planning Intelligence Chief. We very much welcome Patrick. He's starting work here on Monday, April 20th and I look forward to introducing Patrick to the council and having him introduced to the community. Obviously, it will be virtually at this time. With that, I have COVID, my COVID, what we're doing at a later council item. So that is my report.
Thank you very much. And the next item is Ross Property Owners Association. I'm not sure, do we have anybody?
I will, Jeff Koblick gave me a statement to read from the Ross Property Owners Association and usually they would be here if we were at town hall, but wrote a statement, so I will read it, the report from RPOA. RPOA has ordered five flower baskets to be hung for the light poles on the. on the post office side of the street throughout the Ross Commons. RPOA, MMWD, and the town are working on a new drinking fountain to be installed near the picnic area of Natalie Coffin Park. RPOA has offered to contribute to a drinking fountain on the Ross Commons across the street from the post office where the old one used to be located as part of the renovation of the Ross Commons. The RPOA will be contacting the Marin Medical Group, our core, to organize a free class on first aid and preparedness during pandemics to be held at the Ross School this fall. RPOA has a brand new website at rosppropertyowners.com. Once again, it's rosppropertyowners.com. Uh, we will be commencing our membership, membership solicitation next week. As always, we look forward to residents' suggestions as to how to keep Ross a special place. Thank you to the town council and staff for all that you do. Sign the RPOA board.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, the next item is the consent agenda. And I did receive a email regarding item 10E. So I'm going to ask that that item be taken off, uh, because I'm just not clear. I, I think the comment should be at least made on the record. Um, although I believe the person who made it, I believe is still on the call. So maybe he'll want to speak on that. I don't know. But, um, accepting 10E for off the consent agenda, does any member of the council wish to be, remove an item from the consent agenda? I'm seeing, looking at everybody's, uh, to see if anyone's hands raised. I don't see anyone's hands raised. Linda, I do want to mention, I don't see your video on. It looks like your video went off.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually going to be off when I'm not talking.
Oh, all right. That's fine. Didn't have an option. Uh, okay. Uh, so I don't see anyone's hands raised. So I'm just going to ask if anybody wants, any member of the public wishes to take an item on the consent agenda off? And if you do, please raise your hand. I'll give you a little bit to just make sure we have that. Uh, either raise your hand via the Zoom teleconference or remember press star nine, please. Okay. I am not seeing any member of the public. With that, I'll bring it back to council. And I will ask if, um, there is a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I move approval of the items on the consent agenda except for 10E.
Second.
All right. Let's take the vote. How do you vote, Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
And Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
And Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
Okay, so it passes unanimously, A, B, C, D, F, and G.
Okay, thank you. Let's take item 10E. Um, as to that item, I did receive an email and I wasn't, it did seem to go to the town clerk, but maybe late, I'm not sure. So I'm happy to read the comment in. And then if, um, you know, if there's anyone else who wants to hear it, I guess I will raise your hand. Um, so 10E is town council approve and authorize town manager to execute a consultant services agreement with Elizabeth Ford for accounting. Uh, Joe, did you want to, it, it, it looks like this is your item. Did you want to just describe what that is?
Yes. And I don't know, is there a question on there or from the person? But so this is a contract. Liz Ford has been our, uh, contract accountant since November 2011. Uh, she also provided accounting services from 1982 to 2000. Um, she is excellent. Uh, her services are very, very good. And she, as someone who has been a finance director of a city with a $300 million budget, she is as good as any accountant you will find. Um, and this costs at $60,000 to $72,000. Um, if we had a full-time staff person or what she does, the cost would be significantly more if we had to do it by a staff. So it's not only the financially responsible thing to do. Um, she provides high level of effective, efficient services.
Okay, thank you. And so, um, the email I received is from Doug Ryan, who was earlier participating. And I just want to know, um, did you want me to read in your comment? Or did you want to speak directly to it? I'm not sure if Doug's still on the line with us because I don't see him. Doug, if you would, raise your hand if you want to, if you prefer to speak.
Yeah, I don't see him as well.
Okay. I'll, I'll just read his comment, um, that I received. And then it looked like it got forwarded to Linda, but during the meeting. So, uh, please make sure, this is a comment. Please make sure everything is done in accordance with AB5. Based on my reading, the person is going to do work within the normal scope of operations of a municipal entity. And that makes her an employee. Don't want another Gary Broad situation. So that was the comment. And, um, with that, if anybody, I don't see anybody with a hand raised. So is any member of the council wish to, um, be heard on this item? Not seeing any member of the council with a hand raised. So, um, open it up. Did I open it up to the public? I'm sorry. I've lost track of that. Uh, yes, I did. I said, no one's hands raised. So we'll bring it back to council and entertain a motion. Is there anybody that wishes to move or discuss this item?
Can I just ask, Joe, is there any concern? Are, are the, um, concerns expressed in the email concerns we should be addressing? Or is that not a problem?
It is not a problem. She doesn't work. She, A, she's consults with a number of government entities. So she's a consultant with a number of agencies. Her hours are also too low to be in the KELPERS system. So she works considerably under half time. Anybody else would be spending a lot more hours than she does to do what she gets accomplished. So no, that she is not in a concern of being a declared a employee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, is there any other member of council has a question or wants a discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
I move we approve item E.
Second.
Okay, let's take the vote. How do you vote, Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
And Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
And Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item is, um, item number 11. Town council consideration of adoption of resolution number 2154, authorizing the Marin General Services Authority to collect franchise and PEG access fees from cable television providers and to exercise all powers and functions associated with the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act. And town council consideration of order, introduction of ordinance number 706, an ordinance of the town of Ross repealing chapter 8, 5.26, telecommunications ordinance of the Ross Municipal Code to terminate the Marin Telecommunications Agency, MTA. And the staff, uh, member giving the report is town manager Joe Chin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, the item before you is, um, really the termination of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, MTA. And, uh, in effect, taking what little powers they really have left and rolling it to Marin General Services Authority, uh, to make a more efficient operation. Uh, when MTA was created in 1997, uh, at that time, you were able to negotiate for local cable franchises in all the Ross cities and towns. And I believe some other, uh, entities in the county were part of MTA and forming the JPA. In 2006, the state took away a lot of the authority of, you know, negotiate. So for the most part, uh, the whole negotiation powers ended, and they're just collecting the fees and distributing it to other entities. The, collecting the franchise and PEG fees. Um, and they also oversee the PEG access provider agreement with Community Media of Marin County. Those functions are easily able to be done by a different JPA, MGSA, which all of the Marin entities, all the Marin cities and towns and county are part of. Um, what triggered this is the executive director of MTA is retiring, uh, I believe by June 30th. And finding, trying to find, and it made sense to consolidate this. Um, and overall, it, you know, save, uh, estimate about $100,000 a year to have them part of MGSA. Um, every town and city in the county are taking actions on this, uh, throughout this month of April. Um, there will be a second reading of the ordinance needed in May. If half of the entities, uh, pass it, which everybody has been passing it, um, this action will happen, that MTA goes away in MGSA's form. And you do have two actions here. You have a resolution and then an ordinance. So we will need two different council actions related to both of them. And I'm available for any questions the council may have. And, and, and council member Robbins may want to state something because she sits on the MTA Board of Directors.
Uh, yes, just to reiterate what Joe said. The, the reason this entity was formed, uh, no longer exists. And, uh, what it currently does can easily be done by the, by the county, um, agency that, that Joe mentioned. So there, there's really no reason to, to keep this, um, to keep MTA open. That's about it.
Thank you. Um, Linda, you know, I'm noticing that when, that I can't start my video because it says the host has stopped it. So I don't know. I'm assuming people can't see me and they just see my name. Oh, there, the host asked me to start my video. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so, uh, does anybody have any questions of staff or council member Robbins? Okay, let's open it up to members of the public. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on this item? And I will see if I see any hands raised. And I'm not seeing any. So I'll bring it back to council. Does any member of the council, um, have any further questions, discussion? Or is there a motion?
I have a question.
Sorry. Yes.
Um, I'm just wondering, Joe, when we bring it back in May, can we do that on the consent?
Um, it will be the second reading. So it just depends if we're allowed to, but we could do it without a staff report. If I would check with the attorney, but either way, we don't need a staff report on it. I think it does come back on consent. Yeah.
It does come back on consent. Correct.
Thank you. Okay, with that clarification from Julie and our, uh, town attorney, uh, is there a motion?
So I move we approve resolution 2154, authorizing the Marin General Services Authority to collect franchise and PEG access fees from cable television providers and, uh, exercise all powers and functions associated with the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act and town council cons, oh, period.
Thank you. Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, how do you vote, Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
And Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
And Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, um, the next item is-
We got a, uh, that, we have the ordinance to introduce by title only a way for the reading of ordinance number 706, an ordinance to terminate MTA by repealing chapter 5.26 of the town code.
I move approval of, uh, ordinance, uh, 706.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote, Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
And Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
And Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so the next item is town manager update and council discussion on town activities in response to COVID-19. And just for clarification, um, the, the way the item is degendized, I'm not clear if there is going to be a discussion on an item, um, on such topics as construction time penalties. And if there is, my inclination is recuse myself because of the fact that I have ongoing construction in my home. So I just want clarification from our town attorney. If I'm inclined to, uh, recuse myself on that item on, on any discussion of, of construction time penalties, is it appropriate that I recuse myself on this particular item?
Given that the time penalty discussion's not on the agenda, we can talk about it briefly as part of this agenda item as an update. And when we get into that section, if we do, you would need to recuse yourself from that, that discussion. And the FPPC just recently issued guidance on Zoom meetings and how you do that. And it means you mute yourself and you take the video off. And then you come back on when we're done with that section of the, of the, of the report, if we discuss it tonight.
Thank you. Might be helpful for us to separately agendize that in the future. If that's, and not so broadly in that, in any event of that, but I appreciate that guidance. Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager Chin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're now in our fifth week of the shelter in place order and hope that everyone is staying well and safe. Um, it started as the Public Health Order on March 16th, which was subsequently superseded by a revised one on March 31st. We've had in addition to public health park orders. Um, these are no ordinary times. Uh, we have all had to learn how to navigate through the unprecedented time of staying home, social distancing, closure of all schools and non-essential businesses, and scarcities of various products, um, and for us protective equipment. The town continues to follow the Marin County Health Officers Orders, which are strictly in place until May 3rd. Uh, but that day very well could be extended, and there will likely be modifications to the order as we move forward. Um, for the staff, uh, this effort includes coordinations with many jurisdictions at the countywide level. For example, the police chief and I participate in a three times a week call with the County Office of Emergency Services. And I also have three calls a week with all the city, uh, managers and town managers of the Marin jurisdictions. All the organizations like police chiefs, they, and other departments also coordinate on a regular basis, all with the goal of keeping our community and residents safe, um, during this pandemic and sharing best practices and, uh, trying to stay consistent with each other. Uh, while town offices are closed under the shelter in order place, most of town services are still available. So our doors are locked, but we are very much providing most all the same services we did before. Um, we could be, departments could be all contacted by phone, email, other electronic sources. All meetings are now are occurring by virtual meetings or conference calls. Um, obviously, we're improving our usage with different technologies as we move forward. Uh, specific to the departments, police, fire, and public works departments, uh, services are similar to before, uh, this all started for all those departments. But they're all, as all town departments, taking extra measures to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, uh, which includes direct level of contact with the public and each other. Um, in the case of all of them, we're shifting, or at least the police and public works, we're shifting people so there's less contact. Also, you have to plan, like in the police will- Also, you have to plan, like in the police world, we have three on one group and three on another, that you try and keep people separated as much as possible in case one group does get, come out, you know. It's been a busy time interpreting the orders and putting in place measures. And sometimes, obviously, we're putting signs up in a number of places. You'll see more signs in the community than ever before and helping communicate the new orders to the residents. Relate to planning and building services, we've moved to virtual appointments only using phone, email, virtual meetings, and e-track it. The town is still accepting new planning applications. And also resale inspections are still occurring with new safety procedures. So that has not ceased. Though we have seen a significant slowdown in say houses going for sale, but it's not because of our, our, under the COVID. Relate to building permits, most construction projects are prohibited, except for a limited number of permits that are considered essential under the order. Building inspections are conducted virtually when possible. And sometimes they are not. And obviously, we have extra safety procedures we go through when we do do onsite inspections. Building plan checks are continuing to be reviewed and processed really as normal via email and e-track it. But related to building permits, only new building permits can be issued for essential construction. So you get the building permit, the plan process and get ready just for most projects. Not the building permit. Relate to Ross Recreation, obviously, the classes of, in-person classes have stopped. Ross Recreation has started so far being creative and has three online courses going right now. In addition, they've added a lot of free family activities. If you go out to www.rossrecreation.org, check it out, great activities. My wife, I, son, and his girlfriend were spent a very fun Friday night doing art with Casey and learning to hip hop dance with Chelsea. And it was luckily on that one, no one was filming us, that it was not a virtual world. But there are some great things out there and great resources for people to do online and instructions. Human resources, the HR world has been interesting in a number of ways. Determining who could work in the office, who should telecommute, and finding ways to keep employees as safe as possible, socially distancing at all times from each other and the public. And then having to understand and implement the new Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the FF-CRA, that was passed by Congress and signed by the president on March 18th, with the implementation date of April 1st. We had with our first payroll that went through April 3rd, we had to implement it very, got it implemented, including the new emergency employee paid sick leave and new emergency leave under FMLA to be implemented by that first payroll. Finances, we have our budget hearing for, with the council on May 7th. The COVID emergency has definitely affected town revenues. Obviously, you look at all, almost every business, not-for-profit, government entity, this is, obviously, the COVID emergency is having an effect. We will be discussing at the budget meeting how we will continue to be financially responsible and stable and also delivering effective, efficient services to our residents through this time. Obviously, there's a lot of now, we're, I, the budget was largely, I had a lot of it completed and with staff a month ago. We're, we're now redoing significant parts of it related to the newest, latest information. Another change, obviously, is how we're conducting council meetings. Obviously, we're doing this virtually and all of us in separate places. And we will obviously look to enhance as we go on with the technology. Why, I, staff and I want to thank the community for the many people who have volunteered to help senior citizens that need assistance picking up food, prescriptions in their mails, mail. In addition, please remember to help support your local residents, Ross Restaurants and businesses that are still open. They need your help as much as ever. And one thing about the travel, as you're all aware, the down essential travel, the parks and open space areas has the restrictions. And you'll note the signage of throughout town. It's great to get outside, but we ask all residents, please do so near your home. Walk or bike, but do not drive or park unless displaying a velvet disabled person parking placard or your license plates. Obviously, we've closed parking lots and roadside parking near trailheads. And then please practice social distancing whenever using the trails and paths. I also very much want to thank our town staff, who have been dedicate, dedicated, flexible, and determined in providing outstanding services to our residents while meeting the many new challenges that this COVID-19 emergency has presented. Can't say enough about the work they have been doing. We are also grateful that Ross residents and businesses are taking the Public Health Order seriously. It is very good news that in Marin County, the rate of new COVID-19 confirmed cases has not only flattened, but recently, the rate of new cases has declined. We have to make sure this trend continues. Obviously, we have to keep doing what we're doing and social distancing. Please continue to stay safe and we will stay strong as a community. And if there's any questions for me and staff, I do have staff are online. I'm seeing the names of them. So we do have staff available and myself available for any questions or discussion about anything related to activities in response.
Thank you so much, Joe. I just want to say, you know, I know how hard you're working. You're always working hard, but I've just seen your office at town hall so much and I appreciate all that you're doing. I, as a small business owner, I know how much time is taking dealing with all this. And so I know for government, especially as a, you know, jurisdiction that has to enforce these orders and deal with it in real time, we really appreciate how hard you're working and all of staff working so hard. And, um, you know, I, I know, you know, the essential workers, not all of them are uniformed and wanting to come into the office and expose themselves and their family to this situation. And yet we need you. And, and so it's really appreciated that you're doing this work. And I just want to say to all staff that we really appreciate your work. We know you're stretched thin. We know this, you have a lot on your plate with small staff on a good day. And this is not a good day, I think we all can agree. So, you know, this is tough times. I appreciate all residents being really understanding with staff and the fact that they're doing the best they can. And, and just to the community, you know, this is really, really, we're really trying to, you know, create new, new territory here and grapple with new issues. So with that, why don't I open up to other members of the council to have a discussion about this before we open it up to public? Is there any member of the council that wants to be heard on any item related to Joe's great report?
We, we're raising our hands. Do you want to call on us or should we just?
I'm sorry, let me, let me scroll up and down because I'm not seeing that. Okay, hold on. I sure will.
They're showing up on the screen now too. So I see three hands showing up.
I can see the public too, so it's like a little bit more, but I'm going to start with you, council member Robbins, recognizing you.
Thank you. So my question, Joe, is, does the town itself have any discretion in which of these kind of regulations we have to implement? You know, for example, can, I, I know that it's, it seems a little gray when some construction, but not all construction is ongoing. And I think you'd have to sort of think that if some construction is ongoing, we're making the assumption that those workers are not putting themselves at risk. And so if some construction is ongoing, I'm not sure why we're prohibiting all construction. It does seem like one of those industries where the business could carry on without great health risks to the workers or to the people in the houses. So that's one example. The other, and I'm sure the town probably has no ability to change this, but, you know, some of the park shutdown, you know, it seems to me almost nonsensical to say you can't park at, at Natalie Coffin Park to go walk there, but you can park in a grocery store and go into a fairly crowded grocery store, trying your best to stay away from people. So those are two examples, the park situation and construction. Does the town have any flexibility in being a little bit more open in, in areas where we don't think that workers or people will be at increased risk?
We are following, these are, the Public Health Orders are orders for every jurisdiction in Marin to follow. So everything in there, we are looking to implement. We are working with other agencies to see that we are hopefully being consistent across jurisdiction, the 11 cities and towns in the unincorporated county in that. Relate to the part on construction, there are some narrow exceptions that are listed as the essential construction activities. And we've gone from, and there's under 10 projects that are out of, you know, we were at like 75 building permits, so it's under 10 currently that are allowed to be constructing. And so we go through each one individually to see, does it meet the test of provisions? Relate to the park shutdown, a, a lot of that new, the two park orders came because the communities were getting flooded, obviously, as you saw weeks, they were getting flooded with outside visitors. And really, there isn't supposed to be travel. It's, it is a shelter in place is the intent of the Public Health Order. So, um, they're, the Public Health Orders, the goal of what they're saying is stay close to your home. We don't want a lot of people traveling. Clearly, like the first weekends, we got Marin County and probably every place with a natural beauty was getting inundated with people traveling from all over to go there. We did see it Natalie Coffin Green Park, once the shutdown started in West Marin, people were getting flooded in all the side streets, the wood sides, duffs, walnuts. And, um, obviously, we start instituting and the Public Health Order also really start instituting with the two park orders to reduce the traffic. So we're following the, the orders as we are reading, that we got to enforce them and, and be part of the solution. And I would say in Marin overall, if you look at our numbers, we started with significant number of COVID cases. I, we get, I, I'm sent daily reports of how many COVID positives, how many hospitalizations, how many deaths. And you look week by week and we were going up, you know, that geometric rate, then it not only flattened, we're starting to go down. I know it's hard, difficult, it's been really difficult on the public. That I would say, walking around or seeing around Ross or driving around, people overall seem to be complying really well overall. So I mean, but I, I think it is working. Obviously, at the, you know, at some point, we'll see where the Public Health Officer, we're expecting, there is going to be a new order coming out in the next days. That's going to have some variation. And then obviously, we'll see in the coming weeks how they decide. You know, they have their criteria too, they're going through the, and it's really six county public health officers working in conjunction. The one, I, hearing the Marin, Dr. Matt Willis talk, he's saying, you know, it is one Bay Area, people live where you work and travel. And so we all have to act in unison to get this under control. And so we'll just, we will follow the orders as they're given. But right now, at least for now, Marin seems to be doing pretty well. But obviously, we got to keep it up. I don't know if that-
No, I just, I, I would be, I, I wish that we could let up on some of the construction prohibitions because it doesn't really make much sense that some are allowed and some aren't because i- i- you want to keep people safe. And if, if it's safe enough to have some, it's probably safe enough to have more. But I understand, you don't need to reply to that. I just, I, that would be something I think the county should move ahead on. I, I don't think it's going to hurt health statistics and it will help the economy.
To your point, council member Robbins, it is, I think, a very tricky issue, these orders. Can you hear me? I just want to make sure. Okay. It, it is really tricky because, you know, I looked at today the residential building code, which defines as habitability, um, you know, a place where you can sleep. So it talks about bedrooms, it focuses on bedrooms. But it says habitability doesn't mean bathrooms and hallways and these other things. So under that definition, you're just like focused completely on bedrooms, right? And then you can look elsewhere in different other codes and it talks, and, and no one would say that if a bath, if you don't have a bathroom, you, you're obviously not habitable or a kitchen. But I mean, you can look in these different definitions and go down a rabbit hole of saying, well, what is habitability? Or what is sanitation? And, um, you know, I, I went through that rabbit hole today just because I, we're particularly getting an email from one family who has two of their four bedrooms out as a result of a roof project and dormer addition. And, you know, I feel for them because they're a family of five trying to, you know, conduct business and Zoom meetings in one space. Well, I know you can't do that. There's not enough Wi-Fi. And if one person gets sick, how are you supposed to do sheltering in place when you're all five of you in two bedrooms and one bathroom? It's a problem. So I, I feel like that's a discussion maybe for, you know, another day, but I think that another day should not be long. I think it should be short. There's four attorneys on this and, and no disrespect, Elizabeth Robbins, you're equally bright and welcome to participate in, in looking at these orders. But the fact of the matter is, you know, I see Joe's point. The 11 town cities, we should probably interpret them consistently. And yet, there's no language in the order that gives us complete clarity. And I feel like we need to make common sense decisions here. And, um, so, you know, I, I really encourage the council to, to look at this order, make sense of it and be practical in the application so that we're not putting people who are already in just a terrible situation in a harder situation. That's my feeling. But I'm going to open it up to other members of the council. I see, I'm going to recognize council member Beach Cool. And, yeah, Beach, can you unmute? Oh, maybe I did it, I don't know.
I already unmuted, I think.
Well done.
I've got three things that I want to talk about quickly. Let me start with the construction one. As I understand it, basically, there is a county, uh, health officer's order that forbids construction except under certain conditions, which are spelled out in the order in there. If it's going to produce affordable housing, I think is one of them. And I, I forget what the others are. But my question now is, so we do have some discretion to decide whether a particular construction project can go forward. Is that right?
I would say the discretion is very tight. They tightened it up. The first order was not clear. This new order has a lot more clarity. So there isn't a, a tighter area of what the discretion- new order has a lot more clarity. So there isn't a a tighter area of what the discretion is in.
Okay. But what the question I'm leading up to is, are there any, I've been getting some calls from people who say, I want my project to go. Why can't it? So can you tell me, are there some construction projects in Ross where we have found that they can go forward under some of those exceptions spelled out in the county order?
Yes, there are. I think right now, there are nine out of 75-ish.
Where we have found exceptions?
Correct.
Okay. So that's all I wanted to know about that issue. Next issue is, do we have any estimate yet? We get two tax payments a year from the from the parcel, our parcel tax or our property tax. Do we have any idea yet how short we're going to be on our June? Or what we're going to receive in June?
We are not, though I'm going to read, have a, we're contacting the county, but there shouldn't be any shortage on this. The we're under a modified teeter plan, which basically means the county is supposed to be paying us the taxes that were due, but then they get the penalties and interest for late payments. So and it's the second date, the first was the December 10th, the second's the April 10th. We just received payment. It looks like the full, there was one timing thing of a very small amount that we have a question into the county finance person to find out about. Is that related or not? But we're supposed to get our whole full property tax. And right now, we at least have 99% of it.
Oh, we, I thought the payment was in June. It's in April.
April 10th.
Okay. And we got it?
Yeah, they've county already remitted the money to us. But they pay us a percentage. In effect, the county takes some of the risk of people not paying, but then they get the reward. If you look, there's a high fee that's charged if you are even a couple of days late. It's, you know, whatever significant percentage. And and then there's penalties on top of that. If you're really, so the county gets all that. They don't distribute part of that back.
All I'm trying to find out is, all I care about is we got
We got it. Yeah. So property tax is not a risk for us this year. And it shouldn't, next year, the rolls already set based on January 1, 2020, assessed valuations, that's the role for the coming tax year.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Councilmember McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor Breckus. I got a call from a resident today who is having big problems with our post office. And I know I sound like a broken drum here, but these are more serious problems in that this resident is a senior citizen. She has asthma. Her husband has other issues. She is ordering prescriptions from CVS that include her P O box number on the packages. And our lovely post office is returning those packages back to CVS. And moreover, they have told her that because the town of Ross refuses packages from CVS, they will no longer be delivering any packages to the town of Ross. So I know we don't have jurisdiction over the post office. I told her to call Jared Huffman and emphasize that this is an urgent health issue exacerbated by the COVID-19 scenario. I emailed Jared Huffman last week with a minor issue compared to what this resident is going through. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And we need to figure out, or Jared Huffman needs to figure out new personnel or new policies at the post office because this is just not acceptable.
Thank you very much. I'll echo that. I'm hearing a lot of complaints about the post office, and it's a huge problem. And one that, you know, we probably need to focus on. I'd like to recommend Alto Pharmacy where I'm getting my my deliveries, but it's a pain to switch, but I've been super happy since doing it. Joe, do you have any input on this item?
We don't, obviously, is we don't have jurisdictions, the U S office. That being said, the the level of service is unacceptable, what is happening. So it's not reasonable that they are sending the amount of packages. I've heard this complaint over the years. It's definitely, I think I've heard more in the last month than any time before. So it's, obviously, it's working through the post office.
Can I just make one comment about this item?
Of course.
Julie, you said that she was putting her post office box number on it. My experience is you have to put both the post office and the street address to stop them from sending things back.
Councilmember McMillan, do you want to respond to that?
Well, you know, I I think it just depends on the mood and the day because, for example, I got my census letter that was not addressed to my P O box. Was not addressed to me. It did not have my husband's name on it. All it had was our street address, 35 Crest Road, Ross. And by some miracle, that managed to get into my box, no problem, right? And half the time, I put, you know, my street address as well as my P O box because you assume that if there's a chance that the UPS people or the FedEx people are going to use the postal service as their last leg of delivery, you want to be sure. But, you know, you would think that if they have their P O box, that should be sufficient. I I it's just inexplicable, the randomness and the kind of glee that they take in returning these pick, these parcels and letters.
Yes, I I agree. And I think we we need to really make sure that their parking is in their lease. But let me
It's not. There's no parking in the lease. I've looked at the lease.
They don't even park there. So why are they getting parking? I think that we need to look at that. I, if no other member of council wants to be heard on this item, I'd like to open it up to item which resident whose number is or could be non-resident, I guess, 7119. So I'm going to, I'm going to unmute your microphone and let you be heard on this item. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Hi, yes.
Hi.
Announce your name.
Perfect. Hi. Hi, this is Mary McFadden for Canyon Road. I submitted a letter today to explain our circumstances, of which many of you know. I guess after listening to this, I have a few more questions in terms of the the conditions or standards for construction to continue. And in particular, I guess I'd like to know, out of the nine out of the 75, are those, were they all 75 in mid-construction? Because I I actually feel find like I I would like to understand a little more about what is habitable. I I, you know, I think, Elizabeth, you spoke to that earlier in terms of bedrooms. I have two bedrooms for five people right now. And if one of us were to get sick, I I don't have a lot of places to isolate. I live in an open floor plan like the contemporary homes that most people desire these days. And and not only that, is is that a concern in terms of what I just described, but it is unbelievably challenging in terms of conducting business. And I now have three kids doing homeschooling, one ricocheted back from college, and two other high school kids doing Zoom all day, as well as my husband and myself trying to conduct business. Just to add a little flavor, because I didn't do this in my in my letter to all of you. But when I have to take a call, I have to run to my bathroom with my papers. So anyway, I have had to fight on each ordinance because my roof was leaking to to have work continue. And and was able to get that through after, you know, considerable amount of discussion and time. And then, and now I'm just at a point, given that we have no idea how long this is going to go, I have two boys living on a living room floor, again, an open floor plan, and trying to conduct our lives during, in an undeterminable amount of time going forward. And I just would like to understand what the conditions or standards for construction to continue are. I find that I, like, I think we can do it safely. I have people who are willing to work. They can use a separate entrance. They can be one to two people in the space at all times. I am looking for some reasonable, you know, a reasonable take on what is going on here. I understand that you all have deemed a kitchen essential. I am telling you, I need, I need my bedrooms back. I need my boys be able to conduct their schoolwork in their rooms with closed doors, where we're not all like, could you please keep it quiet so we can hear above ourselves? I mean, it's it's unreasonable. It's, you know, it it's just unreasonable. I I don't know how else to describe the situation without getting more emotional about this. I am looking for you guys to be a little more reasonable about allowing us to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to mute your item. If I can figure out how to do that. I did it. And then I ended it. I, oh, God, no, I muted someone else. I think I did it. Okay. So, you know, is anyone else want to be heard on this? Let me just make sure I've got members of the public all covered. I want to give a little extra time because I know it's hard to. Okay, I don't see anyone else. I'm going to bring this back to the council. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item?
Are are we, I'm sorry, I guess I should raise my hand.
Yes, it's okay. I'm acknowledging you.
Are we supposed to be discussing specific things like Mary's construction project? Or like construction penalties? Or is this just a general debrief on COVID-19 and specific things need to be brought forward at a later time?
My understanding, and I'll defer to to our town attorney, is that we're allowed to talk about things generally. If we want to do a deep dive on construction time penalties or responses to specific projects, we probably should separately agendize them. And we have the right to do so under special council meetings and and that kind of thing. So I I don't know if we should dig deep into specifics or just say, hey, generally, this is, you know, our feeling, or hey, let's set a special meeting on, and so we can talk about A, B, and C.
That is correct. For right now, we're having a general discussion about the town's response to the to the emergency. And if we wanted to do a deep dive on any one of these items, we would need to separately agendize it and go in that direction.
But town staff can't make some interpretations of the construction rules to, say, help the the previous caller?
I think what the town staff has been making those interpretations. And again, those interpretations in the order are limited. The order is very explicit of what is and isn't allowed under construction. And as as the mayor stated earlier, there's that one section, and I think most of these disputes fall under this one section of what is construction and what is habitability, and whether that habitability can reasonably be delayed, construction for that habitability. So that's the one provision in the order that, not just Ross, that many communities are struggling with.
And along the lines of that struggle, I just want to say that, you know, Mary is a Realtor who's essential under the order. And according to some Realtors, their photographers are essential, and their their stagers are essential. And yet she can't have, you know, someone come in and complete this work. I I would like to suggest that we conduct special meetings for individual projects that want to be heard. And then we can have the full benefit of our town attorney's advice and what other people are doing and and look at this because there's nowhere in the order that says, you know, Mary's project is a no-go or someone else's. So I getting, I think, getting a little more educated, if we're going to dive deep into projects, I think that should be a special council item. And one that we should get the benefit of, you know, staff's opinion and also what the order says and whether there's language that allows us flexibility or not.
So what's the process for that? Is that is that a separate meeting or staff works with individual families who are in the middle of projects? What do you think is the best way to go about that?
It is my opinion that we should agendize special council meetings to deal with problems as they arise so that we minimize council and staff time, and we have a conversation with everyone in the room. And it isn't a game of, a bad game of telephone where staff tells us one thing, a resident tells us another thing, you know, someone understands this this parameter from staff. I really think we're going to cut down on our time by being focused on particular problems as they arise. And my review of flooding, and I reviewed every flooding item, I mean, I went back 30 years in this council meetings, and of course, at one point in my 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 job here. And it appeared to me that there were lots of special council meetings regarding flooding, and the council was very responsive. And, you know, if things get picked up and solved in the process of that by staff, great. If they don't, though, let's be quick. Let's be responsive. Let's treat these people just as victims of everything as we did the flooding people. And let's set special meetings. I mean, like, is it going to really take an hour? I don't even know. I mean, I think we could be pretty efficient at it. And frankly, we're, most of us are staying at home anyway and have a lot of flexibility. So my thought is, let's have a conversation with deep dive as needed. And I doubt it's a lot of projects because I just don't think it is.
Well, I have a question about the procedure here. Basically, what these, well, I have two questions. One is, I don't think we should be getting into the details of these individual cases. We should leave them to our staff. But I I suspect that the procedure is for a person who doesn't like the staff's report to make an appeal, to file a written appeal to the to the council. And then maybe we'd have to hear it. But at least in that setting, we would have both the staff and the person who's who's unhappy present for the meeting. But I don't think we ought to get into some process where we're having a bunch of separate or even collective meetings where we're trying to deal with what are the appropriate exceptions to this rule and and what aren't.
Well, Beach, can I ask you as a follow-up question to that? Are we going to waive the application process? Is it going to be a 30-day application process? Are we going to have the staff members create a report, and then the applicants pay for that report? Or are we going to create a more flexible, fast process for that? I mean, that is what I saw. You know, in in response to the council to flooding. And I would just suggest that this is just as much of a kind of emergency situation that we should be fast on our feet for. That's my take.
Are we just going to let people tell us, I'd like to have my project on on the agenda, and then we get here without any report?
No, I would say, why don't we take it case by case? I don't think it's going to be a lot. I don't think it's like flooding of shady lane in half the town. But I think that what we should do is look at a procedure, have a further discussion at least, about waiving fees, about being really responsive to people. And if they tell us, hey, it's A, B, and C, and staff says no, And if they tell us, hey, it's A, B, and C, and staff says, no, I think it's B, C, and D, you know, we, we, we just respond. But, and, and I do think we're going to need, you know, our guidance from our staff. But the question is, right now, people are in a bad situation. Are we going to help them out, be really quick and responsive about it? Or are we just gonna slowly hear these things once they get hit stone wall with staff? I'm already hearing that, because I'm the mayor, and I think also because a lot of remodels happen with families at the school, and those people happen to already have my, know me, if they don't, friends, but they know me. So I'm already hearing about it, and Julie and I have dealt with a fair number of people having issues. And it's taken a tremendous amount of my time. And, um, I think we'll be way more efficient as a council and staff if we don't make them, you know, work through staff and then come to us and then individually, right, lobbying us. And then we set it for agenda, and then, how long? Three months goes by and we finally set them on the agenda? And how much have they paid? And do they know they're going to get any kind of fair hearing? I just would really rather see us expedite this. That's my thought.
Well, uh, first of all, I'm not sure we can expedite it, and I'd like to hear from Ben on that. But we're just opening the door to everybody saying, hey, I want my project on the agenda. And then they get here and they start telling us their story. Uh, unless staff knows what's coming, uh, the staff may not, may have difficulty responding specifically. And in any case, this is a county order. Uh, and I, I'm not sure to what extent we have permission, we have the power to interpret this county order.
I'll let someone else speak, because I've spoken enough. Um, let me see if there's any hands raised. And I see, um, Councilmember McMillan. Julie, did you want to speak again, or did I just not raise your, not, um, unraise your hand?
She's...
There, is that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, you know, I think the, my, the way I come at this is the overarching assumption is everyone should be reasonable. And I'm sure the staff is being reasonable, the county order should be reasonable. We want to be reasonable to help our residences, residents in a pretty bad time. Um, and so my question to Ben, kind of following up on what Beech was saying, was, you know, since there is kind of a little bit of gray area, um, and I know, you know, on the one project, we kind of accommodated them based on their unique situation. I think there's probably very few similar, unique situations. Um, but do we have the leeway, given the countywide order, to interpret a little more than maybe what our staff is doing right now?
So I, I think what staff is doing right now is they are interpreting this one section, I think we're, we're going, we're talking about, that I think probably most of these issues arrive from. And I, at least, you know, from my perspective, I think staff is being creative and trying to find room where there may be room with the overarching understanding that it's a very limited exception and that the county has drafted it such. So, you know, as far as whether we want to have the council weigh in on each one of those exception requests, that's up to you all. Um, to answer, uh, an earlier concern, if we were going to create some sort of separate appealing, you know, right, I think we need to set up a special meeting to give bones to that if you want to have this happen quicker and with no fees and something of that nature. Um, but as far as how we're interpreting and being creative, I think that town staff has been trying to do that.
Um, could I, Joe, could I just ask you, aside from Mary's project and the project on Bolinas, are there other projects that are similarly situated that are, you know, really in this gray hardship area? Is it just those two?
I have, well, the Bolinas is moving forward, so, um, I have not heard of any other ones that I have, so, not to my knowledge.
Well, I think that the, this item is agendized as, um, I'm, I'm going to read it. It's, um, "Update and Discussion on Town Activities." Now, further along in the agenda, we have, um, for item fifteen B, "Future Council Items." So to the extent that another council member wants to agendize, for example, you know, whether we should have a discussion, further discussion about a house hypothetically that has four bedrooms, but really they only have two up and operational, and whether, under the rules, using a proper interpretation, we could say, you know, habitability includes moving along those bedrooms. I would suggest we moved further discussion on that to fifteen B and just stop it there. Um, but, you know, at the same time, I think that it's fair to have a discussion here about whether or not we're going to have special meetings, hear projects. As I think Joe said, staff isn't hearing from other projects. We, we had one on Bolinas that we were able to work through. Uh, we have this other one that the caller called in on. We don't know that we have other ones. We could, we could, and I think that, you know, it's fair that if we did, we, we would have to consider it. But my, my question to you is, um, if we have other projects that are, you know, about this, these issues, what are we going to do? How are we going to handle it? What's our response going to be? Um, I, beyond that, I also want to raise one other issue, which is, I have, I have some concern about the, um, the porta potties that are at the end of the bike path and up at Phoenix Lake. And I'm concerned that we should shut those down. I talked to Joe about it, and I totally think that two minds could differ, but I, and, and for that, I'd like to hear from other people. Do you think we should have porta potties open right now, or should we not?
Elizabeth, could I just ask one quick question of, um, Ben about this whole project, uh, uh, construction? The question to Ben is, is the council able to interpret these guidelines a little more liberally than staff? And then could a project move ahead, or is that not even an option? I mean, I, you know, it would mean that staff is being very, you know, kind of following the letter of the law, and the council is deciding, we see it a little differently. Is that, is that something that can, like, reasonably and legally result in a project going forward? So is there a point for us, is there a point in us meeting? Is the real question to Ben?
The answer to your question is short, is yes, there's always can be different interpretations of an order. And that's what we're, you know, staff is doing, is interpreting the order in a certain fashion. Could, um, the council have a different interpretation that's within, you know, the bounds of, of reason? That's different from staff? I think they could. Um, how that, how many projects that affects and whether those projects go forward, um, I'll defer to Joe. And I don't think even Joe knows at this point, without knowing what we're interpreting. Um, but, you know, again, I'll just reiterate, the order is drafted with the goal of stopping construction, period, with limited exceptions. So, um, I would caution the council to go too far and try to interpret it so a lot of construction can move forward. That's not the goal of the order, and we have, you know, that's the county's order to the, to all the jurisdictions.
Thank you. And then Elizabeth, about the, the facilities, uh, I mean, that is an interesting point. I, I just, I sort of assumed that was one of the reasons they closed Tinsen Beach, is that, you know, people could park and walk, but then there's no way to make sure that there's not transmission, um, from faucet handles or when people are in the, the changing room. So it's not unreasonable to think to close those down.
Anyone else want to be heard on that, on this topic?
And this one is one that, what I've seen, it seems, and I think different, is that if you, in like the regular park setting, they've been closed down, but by trails, people, at least a couple jurisdictions I've talked to similar have left them open. And the thought was, it's for sanitation, that if you're hiking, you may need to go to bathroom. And do you really want people going to bathroom outside? And given our porta potties are set in those that are people traveling, and if they don't have a spot to go, they're just going to go outside. Um, versus a park setting, which, you know, the, like a, when you go play the baseball game kind of park. So there are, I know, several other jurisdictions that have taken the county easy that same. But either way, it's, so it's the health on, you know, the contact of it on the one side versus the sanitation of, if you don't give people bathroom, what's going to happen?
I'm going to call on Councilmember McMillan. Yeah, I, I think it might be worse if we didn't have those, uh, facilities. Um, maybe we need to put a sign, if there isn't already one on each porta potty, saying, you know, you're kind of using this at your own risk, and we're not assuming that it's sanitary and who knows what's in there. Um, but the, the alternative could be pretty grisly if you think about it. Right? Beech is laughing.
Calling on Councilmember Beech.
Uh, my numbers, my name is cool, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I, I'm having some difficulty saying, or expressing what I'm thinking. But I think I'm a, we can't take any sort of action because we don't have any action agenda. So the only thing we can do tonight is the suggestion that somebody made, is, and we get to the item about, uh, future, uh, items. We can then see if two people want to request some specific thing. But I'm concerned, I, I feel very much for, uh, uh, Mary's situation. And I think it sounds to me like it's got a lot of merit, but I don't know, uh, what the thoughts were from our staff in, in doing whatever they did. Uh, I'm just concerned, I guess what I'm trying to say is, shouldn't we get off this item, go on and, and see if two people want to put some specific thing on the agenda for our next meeting?
Yes, I'm going to, um, call on our new council member, Bill Kirchner, who has raised his hand and has not, um, spoken. So, yes, Councilmember Bill Kirchner.
Yeah, I, I do think there are some things we can do as a council that might help. Uh, but I, I, I think probably I should raise those as items to agendize at the end, because they are specific proposals. On the, on the issue about closing the porta potties, as a biker and a runner, and if you go for a long run or a long bike, um, these, these areas do come in handy. It would be even better if we all had hand sanitizer and wipes, if you could find them anywhere. So you do, you do, I mean, I think anyone would appreciate you're taking a risk, but, uh, they, I, I also think exercise is a good thing. You know, they tell us that we should stay healthy and have, uh, strong immune systems while getting out and getting some sunshine and some exercise, and some vitamin D through sunshine is, is good in terms of, uh, of, of your building up your own immunity. Uh, so, I mean, I recognize there's a risk there, but I, I, I think I would, would have to, to be against, uh, uh, closing the porta potties.
I agree with Julie. If, if the trails are open, then yes, the porta potty should be open.
Okay, I would take my chances going to the bathroom outside than I would going in those, but I must be in a minority. Can I just, um, another thing I wanted to raise, after the New York Times had their article about, um, coronavirus ripping through special needs, um, uh, homes, I wanted to let you know, I did call the Cedars, um, uh, CEO or, or head and asked him about, you know, what they're doing, and I let him know that we have this volunteer committee. And he reported to me, they have contingencies upon contingencies. And that they felt like they were sufficiently staffed and ready and did not necessarily need to staff up on volunteers. I certainly let him know that if we needed to, we could, you know, consider helping, you know, we have extra volunteers. Um, but I didn't hear back. He said he'd let us know if that was needed, and I didn't hear back. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that that community within Ross is doing well. Um, I know we still have more volunteers, and we do have people that need to help. Um, I'd love to, on the Ross Valley Fire Board, reach out to, you know, that group and see whether there's needed help for any of our first responders. Um, and certainly a first responder is a police officer and paramedics and, and fire who are addressing it. So I think that's something that we could kind of maybe, in our different roles, continue to check in about. Because I think it's great how many residents did volunteer when we, we asked. And I even got an email during this council member about, uh, during this council meeting about one person who said, you know, it's just been tremendous to have a volunteer attend their needs. And I myself, you know, I, I feel like I'm volunteering in this role so much, I haven't, I didn't put myself on the front lines of the mail duties or, or grocery duties, but I have, um, I did one mailbox run for some people, and I have heard from others, and, um, you know, really felt great to be of need for people at this time. So I think it's just really appreciated. Tally Fishburne and Eric Nosterson have been kind of the front people to communicate with, um, residents who wanted help. And I just want to say a special thank you to them for doing that. Um, are there any other quote, COVID responses that we have? And, um, you know, also just mentioning, you know, that mayor's meeting, which Julie is going to be the mayor at that time for that meeting, maybe a time when there's going to be some opportunity for great ideas, you know, coming forth. And so if any, that's because it's just a mayor's meeting, if any member of the council has a quote, "great idea" um, for, you know, some kind of stimulus response or other appropriate response, please let us know. These meetings are all a Brown Agendize Act, so we can't have everyone, uh, participating in those. Um, I had a conversation with our town attorney who had a great idea, which I had a different idea, but along the same lines, of what can we do to help, you know, businesses when they need to rebound? And in hearing Governor Newsom talk about, okay, well, restaurants can reopen, but they can, they have to social distance. I mean, if, if you're looking at fifty percent of capacity at restaurants, I immediately thought, oh my God, it sounds a death knell, you know? And, um, town attorney Benjamin Stock was mentioning to me, well, you know, maybe we can look at ways of right of way. You know, we let these restaurants in our town flood into half the street or sidewalks or whatever. I had had a kind of different idea, which is, why don't we have rooftop bars here and restaurants when, you know, places like Boulder do? And can't we look at regulations that might look at that kind of a use? But, um, there's going to be a need for really smart and creative people to come together. And, um, then for those of us who aren't as smart and creative, but just like, you know, half of that, just to come up with some good ideas. And so, um, you know, I would like to see us have continuing meetings on the COVID response, brainstorming it and figuring out how we're going to help people. I mean, I was even thinking about, you know, we just passed this bond, and we're going to generate all this money for this special fire district. And I hope that we are going to look to hiring Marin County residents in need of jobs and, um, you know, people who can be trained into new jobs, because other jobs have just been eliminated. And, you know, what we can do in terms of, you know, stimulating our economy. So if anyone has any ideas, I think we need to start, you know, having meetings to discuss them, trying to get ideas to whatever ad hoc committee gets created, if one gets created, and, you know, making sure that we're doing everything we can to address this situation. So anyone else want to speak? And I'm, I'm calling this to the council. I see one hand in the public raised, but I think we've called it back to the council, so I think it's more... but I think we've called it back to the council. So I think that's more appropriate there. I, I don't see a member of the council with their hand raised. So why don't we move on from this item? And we are on item 13, which is election of a mayor. And I, it says the mayor has two minutes to talk on this. So it's our tradition that we do a rotation and yet it's not written in law. I have had the pleasure of serving with the Vice Mayor Julie McMillan. And it would be my inclination to follow tradition and propose that Julie Mc, Julie McMillan serve as the new mayor of Ross. Does anyone want to be heard on this item?
I'd like Julie become our new mayor.
Why don't I open up to public just in case anyone wants to be heard? Is there any member of the public that wants to be heard? I don't see any. Okay. So any member of council want to be heard or is there a second to a proposed motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we take a vote on this. How do you vote? Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
And Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
And Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
And Mayor Breckus?
Aye.
All right. So the motion passes.
Great.
I don't get the wrong idea. Can you see?
I get it.
From my daughter. Okay, I'll take it off now.
You can wear it for a year, Julie.
Such a pleasure to serve with you. Really, really fun. I was so happy when you joined the council. Your name had circulated forever as somebody that should be on it and I couldn't agree more. It's just been a pleasure.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I hope I do as good a job as you have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Apparently, even though I'm no longer mayor, it's my job to end this meeting and keep going. So I'm going to go to item number 14, which is election of a mayor pro tem. And it says two minutes, but it doesn't say who is supposed to do it. So Joe, what do you think?
Someone needs to make a motion.
Okay, well, why don't we open up to, well, my understanding is that tradition has us circulating. And if you looked at the last circulation, the obvious next person, based on who was at last, would be Councilmember Robbins. That's my view of how it rotates. Does anybody have any different view? Okay, before I open it for a motion, I'm going to just make sure members of the public don't want to be heard on this because it's an action item. And let me look and I don't see anybody who wants to be heard. So is there a motion to nominate Councilmember Robbins as the Vice Mayor?
I move to nominate Elizabeth Robbins as the mayor pro tem.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
So let's take the vote. How do you vote? Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cool?
Aye.
Councilmember McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Robbins?
Aye.
Or Breckus?
Aye. Congratulations, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Robbins.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to number 15. We have council correspondence as item A and future council items as B. So start with A, council correspondence. Has anyone received correspondence?
I think we've discussed all that I've received.
Okay. There's a number of correspondence that I receive, that I received a lot around construction. In particular, there's a family of first responders on Belina. It's not the one we were referring to earlier, but who have a kitchen remodel, which would normally go through, but their contractor is refusing to work. And so they have followed up with me and said, you know, they fell under this very narrow exception for continuing projects. But sadly, their contractor is an older person who doesn't want to work, especially with first responders perhaps, I don't know. But so that was kind of a hardship situation I heard about. I've had numerous communications, as I mentioned in my mayor's report, about, you know, parking on, I, I got San Salmo or other jurisdictions saying, hey, open up Phoenix Lake to every, parking to everybody and open up Lagunitas to everyone. I got other people saying it's too crowded and we should have more social distancing. I don't know if you guys got those too. I got complaints about gardeners working. I got concerns about financial welfare of downtown merchants, including a request that we loosen up our sign ordinance to notify that that is going on. A lot of post office box complaints as Julie described. And, you know, crowds at Phoenix Lake generally and voluminous biking. So those are the correspondence I've received in the last month, lot of correspondence. And anybody else? I'm seeing Councilmember Kirchner has his hand raised, so I'll acknowledge him and.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to call attention to an email from one of my neighbors, Elizabeth Marlowe. And I, I think this was directed to the town, but it was back on April 11th. And she noted that the, she thought there were a number of people coming over from San Francisco to go to Phoenix Lake and suggested the town consider eliminating the longer term parking downtown and leave simply the shorter term, the 15 minute spaces open. I've, I've been up to Phoenix Lake on my bike and there are plenty of people up there. But, but there usually are on a weekend or when it's nice weather. So I wondered whether anyone else has, has, has any experience with that. I, I did note that the town has put signs up warning people that you're not supposed to drive to, you know, to exercise. You're supposed to leave from your home or, or something to that effect. And, and, and maybe that's about as far as we can go on this.
Yeah, I, you know, I have a little bit of concerns about leaving it to 15 minutes because, you know, my, my niece, for example, is above, rents above the bike shop. And, you know, I would hate to be limited to 15 minutes. And, you know, I, I wouldn't mind being able to, 15 minutes might not be enough, you know, to do what you want to do around that area. But I certainly, I, I asked Joe at one point about, you know, what we're going to do about people parking there. You see them all the time when you drive by, unloading a bike. So clearly they're doing what they're not supposed to do. And I, you know, the town police has to, you know, be kind of central. They do rotations, but a lot of times they can be kind of central. I, I don't know, maybe it's a Chief Masterson question. Can they, can they be a little bit more present in the downtown to kind of warn people and explain that's not allowed? I don't know. But I, I, I agree with your, that residence concern and I got that email as well.
They put, they put warning signs on everyone's cars last weekend. Maybe Joe can speak to that.
How about the chief? Do you want to respond to this?
Sure. What we've done in the last week is we posted all the parking areas off Lagunitas, the side streets, no parking except for residents. And we posted signs in the downtown indicating that you can't drive to recreation areas. And the officers now, myself included, are out in the downtown during the day. And we're probably, we're probably moving people that have driven into the area off a couple of dozen a day. So it's having an impact. Today is the lightest day I've seen and the weather was pretty decent.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is just kind of council correspondence. And I guess we move on unless anybody else has an item to future council items. And under that, we could agendize anything really. So moving on to, I'm sorry, I'm seeing Beech Cool's hand raised. I'm not sure if you wanted to be heard on this item or under future council items.
No, I want to be heard on the correspondence item. As we began talking, I remembered that we got an email from one of our neighbors inviting, which was sent to many of the people in our neighborhood, inviting us to join in at eight o'clock every night, banging on pans and yelling and stuff to thank the first responders and the, all the many people who are endangering themselves and providing services to all of us during this crisis. And we have formed such a thing. And as a couple of minutes ago, I heard it going on up here. And I know Julie told me it's going on in her neighborhood. So I just want to report that correspondence has occurred and has been appropriately acknowledged.
Thank you for that. And I, I, I assume you're explaining to us all that you're howling. And that's happening in my neighborhood. And as the recipient of a new golden retriever puppy from Chief Masterson's wife, that's 12 weeks old, the howling is really confusing to the new puppy. I don't know what it's going to do when, when we stop. But howling's very live in my neighborhood and is joined in as well. So thank you for that. And why don't we move on now to the final item, which is future council items? Does anybody want to be heard on that? Looking for hands raised. Okay, I see Councilmember Kirchner. Why don't I call on you first?
So is this, is this the, the portion where we talk about items to possibly agendize or?
Yeah, as our procedure is that in order to agendize an item, you propose it and then you have to have a second in order for it to make it on the agenda. That's the protocol for the council. So if you propose something, you know, sometimes you get a second, sometimes you don't. And that's where we would discuss it.
Well, I, I mean, I have, I have a couple of proposals, but I don't, I don't know quite how to, how to frame this or how to, how to, how to raise it.
I think you just raise it and the best you can. And we'll see if we, if we want to, or if you want to hear from other council members first, that's also an option.
Okay, okay. Well, let me, I'll give it a try. We, we've been discussing this COVID nine impact on, on construction projects and the extent to which we have discretion and don't have discretion. The county seems to be in the driver's seat here and to some extent the state, but mostly the county. And we're told that the stay in place order that would have expired on May 3rd will continue in some form, but maybe less restricted. And so I would like to propose that the council communicate as a council to our representatives at, on the board of supervisors, including Supervisor Rice, that we would like to see certain changes be made. But it seems to me that would be some sort of a resolution, authorizing a letter signed by the mayor that should be agendized. So if I'm on the right track, that's what I would like to propose.
So you know, I did write such a letter individually to Katie Rice when the first order came out. And her response was, hey, construction is essential. That was before this more limiting order. I've written to her a second time and said, you know, I raised some concerns I had about, hey, you know, can landscapers, could, could the county consider landscapers with one person on a car and one person doing leaves? So that we, we continue those jobs and given that, that what I thought was a minimal health risk, really wrote that not as a council, for the council. I wrote that just saying, you know, this is my question and my concern. I think we all have the ability to, I agree that we could potentially as a group do that. I don't know, Joe, what your perspective is. My thought is they're not going to further clarify that because in order to clarify it, they're going to want to go to six jurisdictions, ours and five others. And that they're not doing that, but I don't know that for sure. I, I just would be concerned that if we limited it, maybe I'm getting beyond actually, as I think about it, future council agenda items, first discussion of this. Which, just so you know, Bill, we're allowed to raise this items to be discussed, but we can't discuss them. And as I think about this now, maybe I'm going into the discussion point, so I shouldn't. But okay, that's one, one idea for a future item. Let me move to Councilmember McMillan. I'm going to unmute you.
Mute myself. Well, I think we, you know, in light of the fact that most construction projects have stopped, I think we need to have an agenda item with the staff's recommendation about how we deal with time limits for construction projects that have been interrupted because of this pandemic.
I'll second the request for that item.
And I also, for Bill's item, which is basically suggesting that the council take a position on various restrictions, I, I think it'd be okay to put that on the agenda for next month. If there are still a lot of restrictions at the county level that we might have some describe, you know, discretion with. If it's on our agenda, we could as a council make, take a position. I mean, we obviously can individually send letters, but I don't think it's unreasonable to put something like that on the agenda. Maybe we won't need it in a month, but it might be if, if a majority of us feel that there are restricted restrictions that we should try to lobby to change a bit, then it'll be on the agenda and we could discuss it together. So I second Bill's item also. And I third the, the other one.
Could I, could I just ask Ben if we as a council have any leverage whatsoever to try to influence these public orders that are, you know, involving eight jurisdictions? I mean, are we just going to be kind of banging our head against a wall?
I mean, I, I think it's a concern and I've, I've faced this interacting with the county council, trying to get guidance and advocating positions for my clients, for our cities. And I've had a hard time with that, given that he's acting in unison with six other county councils. But again, you know, I don't think there's anything, you know, I think it can be effective if there's something about the order that is causing a great concern to our community. You know, I, I see no harm in trying to get that voice heard as a collective council.
So it sounds like there is a desire to have construction time penalties. I muted myself during, as recommended. But there seems to be enough people wanting to talk about that. There seems to be a desire to talk about items that might involve, you know, interpretation of this and a, a, a real council response, not just individual people emailing our representatives, but a real council response for clarification, which, you know, as Elizabeth Robbins points out, may or may not be mute by the time we have another meeting. I had wanted to agendize the, something that truly flexibly lets us talk about items, individual items, of which I think there will be a fairly small number. But, you know, maybe the first special, you know, suggesting a special council meeting to decide how we're going to do it. We're going to waive fees, we have a staff report, we just have people come up and say, here's my problem. I got a landscaping condition, it's very expensive, I want to change it. And decide that procedure. And I'd like to suggest that special council meeting be sooner than later to be responsive. And, you know, we may get told that's a bad idea. We may get told it's a great idea. We may get told, here's how you do it. But just to agendize something so that we can tackle these things. So that's my suggestion for a future council item. And I don't know if I have a second.
I just have a question about that. It, it almost sounds like, well, it's kind of back to where we started with the, the. to where we started with the, the, the building, the constructions. Do, it sounds like we're, the council would be talking about doing things that the staff isn't doing. And I guess we're back to where we started. Can the council do that? I mean, we're sort of replacing staff in your, in your meetings, Elizabeth, it seems to me. I mean, I'm not really sure what we're doing. I do like the idea of being responsive to anyone in town who's having issues because of restrictions. And I do think as a council, we may or may not be able to fix things, but to be responsive is helpful. But I'm not sure, quite understand what the meeting would be.
I, I think that we could have a meeting about whether we have future meetings. And then we would learn and staff would have the benefit of time to just, to explain that, that's my thought, you know. So let me, let me turn to Councilmember, or now Mayor McMillan. Try to unmute you.
There, so, you know, I don't think we want to be in a position of second guessing the staff. But I also think that we want to be reasonable in handling this super unique issue. And I think, you know, we, you and I, Elizabeth, former Mayor Breckus, worked together to handle the issue on Bolinas in conjunction with the staff. And maybe we, the two of us, or maybe Elizabeth Robbins and I can work together with Mary McFadden and the staff to try to, you know, rectify that issue and, and get that handled rather than opening up, you know, what could be. I, I just don't know how many projects are gonna want to come forward and what the issues are gonna be, you know. Someone has a pool and they want to dig the pool because their granddaughter comes to visit and they're worried that their granddaughter's gonna fall in the pool that hasn't been plastered and the cover hasn't, isn't functioning. And I mean, we could just, I don't, I don't think it's respectful to the staff to, to second guess them. But I think in cases of really unique hardship, like Mary McFadden's, like the one on Bolinas, you know, maybe we do need to, a couple of council members need to spend an additional amount of time working with the staff to try to rectify it rather than opening up a huge, you know, can of worms. Because I don't really, I'm not getting the sense, aside from those two projects, that there's really this groundswell of dissatisfaction with the way the staff has been handling and interpreting this order.
I think you're right. I'm a little bit grappling with whether or not we're getting into the weeds and dealing and having the discussion that we could have if we agendized the appropriateness of having special council meetings. But let me hear from Councilmember Kirchner on this, because he has his hand raised.
Yeah, I, you know, as I'm listening to this, I mean, I, I agree. We, we, we don't, certainly don't want to be seen to be or actually be undermining our staff. But my concern is that this is such a rapidly evolving situation. And we agendize something for the next council meeting, which is not until May. And meanwhile, things are moving ahead. And I frankly, personally would like to see something on calendar that, 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 that gives us a chance to, to take some actions and hear from the public directly. And of course, through staff too, with staff recommendations. So I, I'm not quite sure how to do that. You know, the idea of some special meetings sort of appealed to me for that reason. But I'm not, I'm not too, too clear on exactly how to frame whatever we would be doing.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm not, okay, I'm seeing Councilmember Cool with his hand raised. And so it looks like you have a mic.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned that this is too nebulous. How are we gonna decide whose house is on this agenda? Whose project is on this agenda? We've got, if we're gonna do something like this, we've got to set up some process for doing it. And we can't, we can't just let people call in and say, well, I want to tell you about my project. If we're gonna do something like this, we've got to be, we've got, I think we have to start with a discussion of what it is and how the process is gonna work. So as it presently stands, I don't think we have anything very, any very specific item being proposed to put on next month's agenda.
So my, my, my request for a future council item is that we meet in one week, that we talk about a meeting where we in fact discuss how we would hold special council meetings. Maybe we can look back to the flood items. I believe that my recollection is they met weekly. If we see during that week time that we don't have meetings or the device says, hey, we don't need this. We don't even have anybody reaching out to us. You know, I kind of hate to limit it to people who have already reached out to me. But I kind of also think that maybe that's all that there is. I'm not sure. If we resolve issues, I mean, you know, just so everyone knows how it works, it's not that it has to be right now that we vote on agendizing this. But two council members, I, as I understand our rule, have to say, I want to agendize this. And if they do, then we have a meeting. The next question is, do we have a special council meeting in a week or two weeks? Or do we have a meeting in a month? I think a month is too soon. So, I mean, it's too late. I think that we should be a little more quick on our feet with this situation. So my suggestion is we hold a council meeting, special council meeting in a week. I'm not sure that we agendize any particular item, but maybe we need to reach this point, put in a procedure to say, this is how we'll do it. You know, that's my thought.
Well, I can't attend, I've got a TAM meeting next Thursday. So I can't attend if it's gonna be next Thursday.
Well, I wasn't just suggesting in a week, like at night. I mean, we could do a day with the shelter in place. Everybody's got so much flexibility. Maybe we could set it, you know, approximately in a week's time.
But then what, what is the agenda for a week? Is the agenda to talk about how we help residents with their building projects? Is, is that the agenda item?
I don't think so. I, my thought was just, you know, how we are going to conduct special meetings to respond in real time to COVID problems, including any specific construction problem.
I mean, you know, for, I mean.
Exactly the point, you know, if staff resolves things and we, we're great, we're good, we don't need to. If we see the need for a meeting, then, you know, we follow this two council meeting rule. But the two council meeting rule normally contemplates that it would be 30 days out. My question is, how do we deal with the fact that we might, I don't want to have special meetings? Do, you know, I'm not sure. But I think we need to have a procedure in place to be a little more quick.
I, there may already be one in place. I mean, when the school flooded, there were really, there were already guidelines about how do you call a special meeting? Who can call a special meeting? The superintendent or the school board president? So I, I think there, there are rules somewhere about who can call a special meeting and then you just call it. So the mayor, I think, has the ability to do that. I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that those rules already exist. And they're separate, of course, from our guidelines about what goes on our next agenda. Because, I mean, that we understand. But as far as who can call a special meeting, maybe Ben, you know, who can call a special meeting? I, I.
Yeah, I don't have our procedures in front of us. And if Joe knows them off the top of his head. But usually it's the mayor in consultation with the town manager would be the one who would decide whether to have a special meeting.
So it's not a council, two council members? You have to have council, one council member and the town manager? And if they don't agree, there's no special meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of that.
So normally we say that if two council members want to agendize, it doesn't just have to be the mayor and vice mayor. It can be any two council members. It gets agendized. But we don't, I don't know what the rule is relating to special council meetings, and I'd like to know that.
Oh, no, so as part of this agenda item for 15B, you could certainly, as part of your request, have it be a special meeting, if that's your request. If you have a second council member who agrees with that, then it would be a special meeting. And the time and place, I would assume, would still be up to the mayor and the town manager to pull, get the right time for it. But no, if, if your proposal is to have a special meeting to discuss how to conduct meetings in real time when issues come up, that's what I'm getting from my notes. And then there's a second, then we would have a special meeting and have that agenda item discussed.
I think what Councilmember Robbins was questioning is how, okay, so what you're saying is, right now, two council members can put something on the agenda. My, the way we've done it in the past, it goes on the next regular agenda, which would be late, mid-May. Separately, there's a procedure for calling a special council meeting. That procedure may be the mayor and the town manager. So now we have a procedure where two council members could think something should be agendized. But because the mayor and the town manager maybe don't agree or disagree, it still doesn't go on right away. So.
Ben just said it could. Ben just said, and the two people tonight can say, we want this on the agenda, and that agenda can be in one week. So Ben said, yes, indeed, that could be done tonight.
And the manager's not gonna say no if council members want it. Obviously, we're gonna pull all five council members to pull them to see what date and time works. I guess the question is, what's the meaning? And if this is the projects, I don't know if Julie's idea, if you want to move, is you have two council members meeting instead of a five council members and writing staff reports for all council members is gonna take a lot longer going through the procedures than staff working with a subcommittee of council members on items would be a much faster and probably efficient process than trying to get all five council members with big public meetings and getting staff reports. And that takes a lot more time than just having conversations and moving things.
Let me open it up to Councilmember or Mayor McMillan and unmute you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just confused about what the, this special meeting agenda would be. And I'm, I'm just not sure that, aside from the McFadden project on Canyon and the project that you and I, Elizabeth Breckus, already, you know, helped to resolve, I'm just not sure that it's necessary to have a special meeting and kind of invite people to, who may have, who are probably already, you know, kind of resolved that this is the decision of the staff. Nobody's reached out to us. It's probably not a habitability or sanitation issue or a financial issue. And so by having a special meeting with that, it's, it seems like it's gonna elicit a lot of other people coming out of the woodwork complaining and demanding that they be treated differently than the staff has already treated them. And so I'm just hesitant to kind of open that floodgate.
Right, I, I understand that. My, my thought was not to agendize particular items because that seems like that's a conversation for another day. My thought was to agendize how we are going to conduct our special council meetings if needed, and maybe they won't be needed, as we respond to issues regarding this COVID thing. So let's assume it's not appropriate tonight to say, let's put Mary McFadden's project on the agenda. Let's say that's not appropriate, which is what I'm hearing. Then my suggestion is that we set a meeting in a week and say, okay, if we want to set up a procedure where, you know, applicants can come before the council and say, I went to staff and I didn't get quite the, the right response, but I would like to be heard by council. What do they do? Do they pay $500 and then they have to go to ADR? And then they have to go to council? And that's a two-month turnaround? I mean, that's our procedure right now. Is that what we want? I would suggest that we look at setting a different procedure. And I mean, ADR is another example. What is ADR? It's mandatory right now. Is it gonna stay mandatory? I mean, there's a lot of things that I think we can and should discuss at a special meeting about procedures before council and how we're gonna do this in this crisis. That's my thought. And that's why I think it's important. And I mean, we could create an ad hoc committee. I'm not sure it's agendized under quote, future council items to create that. But that could be another subject matter that could happen is, should we create a light on its feet ad hoc committee to, you know, work with staff on certain issues as they come up? I think we can't talk about it now. I think we could at a special council meeting. And I think that special council meeting, I don't know that I need a staff report on that item. I think we could have a discussion on it. It could be briefly framed on, you know, hey, what are we talking about? And then we could just go from there. Let me go to Councilmember Cool.
I just looked up in our procedure manual and the, what, a special meeting can be set either by the mayor or by a majority of the council, according to our procedure.
That sounds like a Brown Act violation to me, majority of council. Unless then it is at a council.
We, we don't even have agendized tonight whether, whether we're gonna have a special meeting.
No, we're talking about future council items. And my suggestion is a future council item would be how we have special meetings to be, to respond to these kind of things. That's what, if I don't have a second, I'm fine with it. I'm just, just want to make sure people understand what I'm proposing.
Well, I'm not sure we could vote right now whether or not to have a special meeting. On the other hand, the mayor, it appears to me from the procedure manual is that the mayor herself could decide we're having a special meeting.
Okay, I'm looking to see if other hands are raised. If not, it sounds like nobody seconded my proposal to have a special meeting on our responses, in which case it dies. Okay. All right, Councilmember Kirchner, I'm gonna unmute you.
Yeah, I, okay, I'm, I'm in a, I'm in a second. I'm in a second, your proposal to have a meeting, a special meeting on procedures, expedited procedures as may be appropriate relating to the COVID crisis, if that's specific enough. I, I'm just concerned that the normal process takes so long that, that we, we just couldn't address things quickly enough.
Well, I think I have to raise, I'm sorry to be, I guess, so obstructive, but I think we ought to follow our procedures. And I'm gonna raise a point of order that it's inappropriate tonight, right now, to consider having a special meeting. Now, if our mayor wanted to call one, that would solve the problem. But I'm not suggesting our mayor should. But it's not appropriate, I don't think, for us to vote now on anything.
Well, I don't, I don't, my, maybe this is a question for our town attorney, but I don't know if it's a vote. It's future council items and it's requested by two council members to have a special council meeting. And so that's the, what I understand. Let me go to Councilmember, okay, McMillan. Okay, I'm sorry. Let me go to Councilmember McMillan, Mayor McMillan. Sorry, let me unmute you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So as mayor, I think right now it's premature to have a special meeting about any of these procedures because in my mind, nothing is really ripe to discuss. I think things have been going overall really, really well. I think there's two projects where we've had some bumps in the road. I think one of the projects has already been handled. And I think, you know, probably with all of this discussion that we've had tonight, I think the staff probably has additional guidance and can go back and probably hopefully handle the other project. If they, if, if it's still not, you know, if it's still churning around, maybe that's the time to call a special meeting. But I, I don't really understand calling a special meeting about procedures. I mean, I don't even know where we would begin. It, it's so hypothetical and so speculative as to what could come up procedurally down the road because of this thing. I, I don't. I, I don't, I just don't know what we would be talking about. So that's my, that's my view.
I'm going to call on council member Robbins.
I, I tend to, I, I agree with Julie. I, I think if things seem to be going, if, if, if there's, I feel like there's not an absolute obvious need for something to be discussed next week. If any day there is such a need, we just call a special meeting. Well, Julie calls a special meeting. But I, I'm not, I, I, I'm okay to just leave things and have the staff work carefully and closely with the mayor about these current projects that are up in the air.
I see the biggest problem with that as being the Brown Act violation. So let's assume Julie and, and council member Robbins are talking about a specific, specific project. And all of a sudden I get wind of it and I want to raise it. I'm no longer able to talk to council member Robbins or the mayor because I can't do a Brown Act violation and loop them in on a problem that's occurred. So, you know, I, I, maybe I'm in a minority, but my thought is we have special council meetings, maybe they're 10 minutes long, and we say we have nothing to talk about. All problems have been solved, but having special council members gives the public an opportunity to say, hey, I got issues. Here's my open time. It gives the council member and members an opportunity to respond in real time and look like we should be doing things, which we should. And making sure we're responsive. But I, I appreciate that. My thought was that two council members are typically adequate to set future council items. I certainly think council member Cool is competent enough to, if he looked up the protocols and sees that three is needed for a special council meeting, and we did not achieve a three person at this council meeting. Then the best we can do is either one person of council, that would be the mayor, if, and I'm assuming Beech is right, and he's reading it, can call a special council meeting in the next 30 days. Or perhaps, well, there can't be a majority before then. Right? Cause that would be a Brown Act violation. So then the next best is, we wait 30 days, we have no meetings, and if somebody, you know, wants to raise it, we do so, but not committing a Brown Act violation.
I'm not sure it's a Brown Act violation to, if, if we were to propose a special meeting and just get a yes or no from people. Because isn't the Brown Act, you're not allowed to discuss the business, you know, discuss, discuss something of substance. But if the item is to schedule a meeting, I, I don't think that's a Brown Act violation if somebody sent out an email and said, I'd like to schedule a meeting. Can you say yes or no? Do you, I, I, I don't see that, I don't think that's a Brown Act violation.
Let me just step in here real quick. So you can determine whether to have a special meeting by polling the council and seeing if the majority wants to have a special meeting. That, that, that is an exemption of the Brown Act, so that would not be a problem.
Okay, so if we limit it to, you know, a council member who felt like there should be a special council meeting, reaching out to all five and say, I'd like to have a special council meeting on A, B, and C. And then other people, what if they want clarification? I mean, we just spent like 20 minutes wanting clarification, and I always worry that we're skirting along the lines of discussion verse, you know, that. How, could you give us some direction on how we would do that?
Yeah, I mean, again, that's a valid concern. So I, if that, if it turned into that, I'd have to, you know, tell the council, we have to stop that conversation. And ask whoever's asking to make the proposal, just to make it clearer. If that's, if people are having a hard time understanding what the agenda item would be, then, you know, the solution is that whoever's proposing it, to make it absolutely clear what the agenda item is. But you're right, you can't have a discussion about, you know, the merits of that, having had a special meeting. You just have to say yes or no.
Okay. So with that direction, do people, there was only myself and council member Kirchner feeling like maybe we should have a special council meeting in a week's time to address more readily additional council meetings. Maybe that's all the council members that join in it. And if that's the case, then I think we've got, we've come to a conclusion on 15B. Let me see if anybody else wants to be heard. Okay, seeing none. We've got direction, and the next item is adjournment. And as we all know from our training, the adjournment is really abrupt. So I'd love to chit chat with you all. I can't wait to be in the same room with you and without a mask. When it's safe to do so, but I just want to say thank you all and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth.
Hi.